There's a physician here if you need something stronger for your dog.
Yeah, I only brought one pen, but wait one second.
I have actually this.
I got it, G.
You do? Okay.
I forgot about Ben this morning. I'm sorry, Ben.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I forgot too, we're up when we want.
They weren't gonna let us in, they kept the door locked.
Yeah, I'm just glad you showed up. Yeah, we decided to keep it locked until it was time. Okay.
Okay, so I will officially open this select board meeting at ten oh one. It's February fourth. Our first item on the agenda, we're going right down the list. Public comment. And we have two people present.
And one of the board.
Okay, let's go in-house first.
I have nothing.
Rich, any comments?
Uh, yes, I had a question about the Avatar software rollout.
Okay.
I don't need to know the details now, but I'm very interested in the process that you're gonna go through for rolling it out. When does it become the official system of record and that kind of thing? Uh, and the second question is what provisions will the town make so that everybody can see all the data that is in the Avatar database? I looked at their site and a lot of towns just list the appraised value, the assessed value, the address, and the owner. And then if you say, oh, I wanna see more, I wanna see square footage and lot size and stuff, it says you need to subscribe. So there are towns that have bought licenses for the general public and so that's part of the question, what is the board's plan? Don't have to answer now.
That's good.
But that's, I wouldn't expect you'd have, I mean, if you had a detailed answer, I would listen, but this is something that I find very interesting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will try and keep in mind when we get there, look at those details, and I agree, if we can do it without it being unreasonably expensive, there should be a site where people can go and see all the details. That doesn't mean there is one, but there should be.
That's all about the budget.
And we have Sue McKenzie. Sue, welcome.
I'm just tuning in to hear what's happening.
Oh, boy, you're having a boring day?
Something like that.
Okey doke. Then, moving right along, we have minutes to review and approve. Two steps. January fourteenth was the evening meeting to talk about the RRMB and then January twenty-first was a regularly scheduled select board meeting. What do we wish?
Do we know what that is?
Yes.
It's over at the police station. They're probably watching some sort of a...
A training video, yeah. A little difficult.
I wonder if we could ask them to...
I am right now.
Or is it more interesting than what's going on?
It might be.
Maybe we could all take the training.
That's what I'm worried about.
What are we wish to do with the minutes?
Um, I'll second.
Both sets?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Indeed, you got those couple of comments I said.
Yes.
And she sent them out. I saw those.
I'm sorry, and who moved that?
Um, Ben.
Ben did.
Okay, thank you.
And David seconded it. And all those in favor say aye?
David, aye.
And Judy, aye? Okay. And then, that's a check. That's a check.
Sean says sorry.
He doesn't want us to learn all the techniques. We have a manifest to review and approve. I believe it did come to us earlier. That was good timing. Hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-two cents. What do we wish to do with the manifest?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments? No. All those in favor say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
David, Ben, that's approved. We have scheduled a public hearing for February eighteenth at ten fifteen in the morning. That's our regular board date, so hopefully everyone will be here. And in addition to our regular meeting, we have ten fifteen public hearing in order to accept unanticipated revenue. We have two amounts of unanticipated revenue. One is sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and the other is two hundred and ninety-four dollars, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Dina, can you quickly tell us what those two things are?
Sure. The sixty thousand, four fifty-six is from the Lime Foundation to go towards the Edgeo Bridge for the additional timber cost.
Thank you.
And then the two ninety-four, nine fifty-five is the Edgeo Bridge donations.
Wow.
Private donations and...
That's wonderful.
It is wonderful.
So...
It's amazing.
What is the town's out-of-pocket for that bridge repair expected to be at this point? Do we know? Like after you net up those donations and the Lime Foundation?
I would have to look at my little spreadsheet, but it's...
Bullbar.
Almost taken care of the one hundred and ninety thousand that we had to raise from taxes, almost. So, yeah, and it ended up being, let's see,
This was...
Seven fifty-something with the additional sixty thousand.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So this is really, really...
Incidentally, Stan Groton has been posting updates on what the bridge looks like.
Oh.
Really? Where does he post them in?
I have, I saved them on his Instagram and his Facebook.
Is there a way that, can we post that or transfer it to our...
I will email him and have him...
That would be awesome.
Send us a few updates. That would be awesome.
That would be good.
I was actually looking for some and that was one of my onto-tude lists today, was to call him.
And I did wanna mention that I was really pleased with how quickly when Dina got into work yesterday morning, she put an update on the list serve.
That was terrific. Thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was really good. And for anyone that might be listening, probably not, you can always just, you can email the list serve if you want, or you could email Dina or the select board with your questions or inquiries. But whatever.
Now, all that technology works, but if we could get it posted, put it on the website.
That's what I'm gonna have to say for.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that would really be a good idea for the people who live on that road who are sort of, you know, when is it gonna be ready, when is it gonna be ready?
Well, pictures better than thousands of work.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, and it is just interesting.
Yeah, even the people who don't live just wanna see how, what it looks like when it's repaired.
Yeah. No, that would be great. Thank you, Ben. I'm glad you did.
I looked on Instagram for Stan Groton, couldn't find him, so...
Gritten? G R A T O N?
Groton, G R O T O N, right?
Uh, no, that's not it either.
No, it's, uh...
G R E A T O N or something like that.
A T O N. Either way. Um, I was gonna say, well, we'll do like a little green bar thing, Jordan, we'll do it and it'll be Edgeo Bridge and it might already even be there, because we have some other info too, so...
There's an old info piece up there that I looked for, but I'm not very good with the website, so...
And we're doing that for the budget too.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, next up, we have a raffle permit. That's approved, that's approved. The raffle permit application. You guys, it's up to you how you feel about this. I think it's a great idea.
Can you...
It's a bag, it's, it's an incentive to people with dogs to come in and register their dogs during the period of January first to April thirtieth, by which time, according to the state, you're required to have registered your dog. And sometimes people just don't get around to it, so she's trying to encourage compliance.
So this is, this is an incentive for the residents of town to get in here, register your dog, and this is a town-sponsored raffle that...
I believe it is. It's the town clerk making the application.
Yes, right, and so we need to decide. Are there...
Well, it has to come to the board, because every single raffle has to come to the board per RSA to be approved. And the police actually looked at it too.
And it has to be charitable organization. It can't be, you know, how...
Personal profit.
In the personal profit, or there was a huge thing in New Hampshire a few years ago with the churches that were doing bingo.
Yeah.
And I'm not even sure where that ended up, but they were doing it for years and then all of a sudden, they couldn't do it.
So, so this, just for my information, so any organization doing a raffle needs to be aware of this?
Yeah, and they are mostly, like the school, any school raffles or BTO, they always come in and do it. It's on the website.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want the RSA number?
If you had it handy.
It's right here.
Yes.
RSA two eight seven dash capital A colon seven.
Thank you.
I think I just sent that to you.
So, okay. What do we wish to do about this new raffle?
I'll move it. I'll second.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Ben. Any comments for, again, otherwise? Okay.
I don't know, if it gets, if it gets more dogs and it's less work, the police department has to do.
Yep, and less follow-up she has to do.
Yeah.
Good idea. All those in favor say aye?
Judy, aye. Ben, aye.
Judy, aye. Okay, that's approved.
Can we get a free roll-in retriever or something?
Toys, dog toys, that's what you get randomly.
Random dog toys.
Yes, dog toys, yes, that's what it says.
Confiscate a dog.
It'd be a bag of dog treats slash toys. A random raffle selection. Okay, here's the thing that made me crazy, but that's all right. Up next.
Yeah, me too.
Can we reach that, Judy?
I got to shoot ya. Thank you. Add that to my pile. We have approved the raffle permit. Now, election configuration of town ballots is what this says, but what we have is a new state legislature bill that requires every city, town, and school district to provide at least one accessible voting system tablet at every election. I'm not gonna go into all of this, but apparently what we had wasn't quite right, so we are now having to buy two, well, we're buying one tablet, the school's buying one tablet.
No, we're not buying the tablets. The tablets are given to us by the state.
Okay.
We're buying the programming of it, because every time you have a ballot, the ballot is different. So the information has to be put into it and updated, so...
We have accessible booths.
Yeah, that was sort of my question. Have we ever had any issue at all with anyone not being able to vote or having difficulty voting or...
Not to my knowledge, but this is not just to us. This is to the whole state of New Hampshire. This is a...
Yeah, so take the twelve hundred dollars that we're wasting and multiply it by several thousand and then you have an idea about what this does for nothing.
Well, don't get me going. I mean, we don't even get...
I've been in elections for at least five years or so, and I don't think we've ever seen anybody go into that tent.
So, so we're wasting twelve hundred dollars?
I've seen it once.
We're not wasting twelve hundred dollars. The town is spending six hundred dollars to have it programmed, because the legislation tells us we have to.
Well, yeah, yeah, but...
Okay, I'm just making it clear.
So, I'm characterizing that as a waste, because it's not accomplishing anything useful or necessary.
Well, and I also...
Or helpful to anyone.
Can't believe...
Other than the people who run the software company. They're, they're, that's very helpful there.
That's my, that's my group, is that we didn't even get to pick the software company. The Secretary of State did, and we just have to use it, and it's ridicu, it's a expensive...
Rich?
I was gonna come down on the other side. I'm gonna disagree with you, David, that, that these laws are in place for purpose. The fact that we are so fortunate, or the residents of Lime are so fortunate as to not need these accommodations is delightful. But I think it's important for, if it's a mere six hundred bucks...
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred bucks.
Well, that's been a town and a school.
It's, that's fine. I mean, that's, that's an acceptable expense to be able to say you can even show up if you have these challenges and vote. So, I'm, I'm gonna say that's okay. There are lots of other places to, to do it and, and we surely should negotiate with the company and get it for five hundred bucks a copy, but... And I, I completely agree that if someone needs help voting or we ought to do everything we can to accommodate them. My point is that we ought not to be spending money here where it doesn't do anything.
Can we guarantee that the program is gonna be accessible to those who need it?
I think, I think the resolution to this is we're, we're a little unhappy with the way it came down. We agree that the greater good for all, it might be a good idea and we're very unhappy with being made to pay money for something that we personally don't think we need.
Or have any control over.
Well, we gotta do it. So do we need to vote this, or can we just be knowledgeable about the fact?
I wouldn't add a poll.
You should vote it, because it's an additional amount of money that we, of course, didn't plan on, plan in the budget.
Well, I will move this. Oh, did Ben already move it?
And I'd like to see it when it gets all done.
Well, they got that tent over in the corner. I'm going. I'm gonna go.
Yeah, I'll go over there too.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna close my eyes and see...
Push the button.
I mean, I mean, I'm a computer guy. I wanna see how stuff works. Anyway.
We have had to have that white tent up with the state's computer and everything every time I've done elections.
Yeah.
And we've been lucky. We have had some even more elderly people than myself who have come in and really were somewhat confused and somewhat lost. And we were able to have someone sit with them at the, at the table alongside where they're, where the cardboard things and help them. But we have made accommodations for people. It's not...
Yep.
It just hasn't gone so far that, that a personal hand-holding didn't work.
Yes, and to that effect, we're a small enough town that mostly we might know the person, or they might know the helper. So there's some trust there, and I certainly understand in some of the bigger municipalities, there isn't that connection.
I mean, there's very elderly people who didn't bring identification, who Kevin knew and, you know, identified them as the moderator and took them over and helped them, you know, through the process.
Thank you. All those in favor of this voting system software purchase, say aye?
Yeah. David, aye.
Judy, aye. Shall we say under protest?
I think it's kinda funny that we have to approve it when we're required by statute to spend the money, but what would happen if we didn't approve it?
Well, you're required by statute to have it. But it even says in there, who gets to decide?
No, it's all simpler. It's all simpler to approve it.
Yeah.
Only twelve hundred.
Save our...
Well, you're responsible for six hundred.
How many times do you think you're gonna have to say that?
By which, Dina, means that the other six hundred is on the school.
Right.
Which means...
You still pay for it.
It's ten, yes. Okay. We need to consider permission for Lime Fiber to dig along a class six road, the old Dorchester Road, to install, is this a general distribution line or is this specifically to one or two properties?
Lime Fiber to one property.
And, okay.
Which road is this on?
Old Dorchester Road. It's going back past Tyler Ridge's old house.
Oh, there, there.
And up back there for Robin Murrell.
So I would guess you already have it.
No.
Have we done this before? It is a class six road, but...
For Fiber? Yeah, there's permits for Fiber, but, and, and, you know, they've gone along a lot of roads, but not a class six road, so that's the only reason why. And it's not quite across the road.
It's going along the edge.
Scott will meet them out there. There's a whole form for the, for the property owner and the, and the construction company to fill out and adhere to.
And are they anxious to start, because I did not
Not yet.
review this with respect to the laws governing class six roads, which I'd kinda like to do.
Well, I'll move it anyway, so I can get it passed and worry about the law.
I think she just wants to make arrangements. They're not gonna be doing it. Well, I mean, I wouldn't bring it to you guys if you weren't allowed to do it, so... But it's, you know, she just wants to get things arranged time-wise with them and won't be till spring.
So I move it in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we're comfortable with that?
You don't have to sign it now. You can just move it.
And if we have to, we can revisit it next time.
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
I will abstain at this point till I have a chance to check it out, but I'm sure that Dina knows she uses it more frequently than I do.
I try. That's okay. Absolutely.
It's that class six road status.
Yep.
All right, that goes in the follow-up pile. Did we vote? You did vote two and one.
Yep.
Sanders searches has an agreement to do the title searches for our tax collector. I believe we have used them in the past. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We've used them for years and years and years.
Actually, they were on this manifest that we just...
Yes, I saw that.
It was the hundred dollar old me thing.
So what have we had for an agreement with them in the past?
Same exact thing.
So this is just an update and move?
It's just a, yes.
I move it.
Because we can't, you know, we don't do multi-year contracts, so it's an every-year thing.
Okay, so Ben moved it?
I'll second.
Thank you, David. And this is for tax map maintenance.
No.
No, that's what it says at the top.
Sanders is searching deed searches, lien searches, all that kinda stuff.
Yep. All those in favor say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye. It is, okay. Passed. That's Sanders. Now, what I was looking at next in my packet was tax map maintenance proposal. And this is from Cartographic Services. It may have a different name now.
C A I.
C A I Technologies. They are the town members. I will move this one.
Second.
Uh, Dina, just a, a general question. We get a lot of these, obviously, these contracts like this one's with this Sanders searches. You know, they're like these little six hundred, I don't know what, you know, what, what the amount of money at issue is here, it's probably under a thousand dollars for the year. We get lots of these kinda contracts and they all, all the companies have their own legal forms and they all have their own stuff. Do we generally have Laura review these or, and she's...
If it's a new company and it's a new contract that's come in, like that one has already been reviewed, you know, however many years ago, and it hasn't changed. And if one comes, 'cause I always look at them, if one comes and it's changed, you know, I would send it.
Like, as a lawyer, usually if I got a contract, there's always, like, I'd always wanna put a cooperation provision in there that obligates the party to cooperate with us if we wanna request something or if we have, you know, to, to work with us if we have, you know, there're just certain things I'd usually wanna see in an agreement, and then I get these things and I look at them and they, you know, they're all different, they're all drafted by different people. And like, I'm like, I'm not gonna start editing up this legal agreement for six hundred dollars that we're spending, but at least it'd be some comfort that we've, you're comfortable that all of these have been reviewed by county council. It's not really my job anyways.
Well, I also think...
I mean, no, I mean, it's not my job to be the lawyer reviewing these agreements.
I think if we had had problems, you know, like, let's say, you know, the deed searches weren't being done in a timely fashion or something was happening, we wouldn't be signing another contract with that company.
Okay. I mean, you know, like, when we got the, that, that agreement for the fire department where they wanted a, you know, for servicing the equipment there, it was a little more money at issue and some of the stuff in there was really offensive. And so we did decide not to sign it, because we, but, you know, none of these are rise to that level, but still you wanna make sure somebody's looked at on the evidence.
Yes.
So we have a motion in a second, what we wish to do with this contract for tax map maintenance.
He's signing it.
Well, can I have some?
Oh, you did already.
Can I have some ayes? Ayes?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye. Okay, thank you.
And the next one is not ready. I'm so sorry. I ran out of time. Imagine that.
Thank you.
I think that was strong.
Score. Okay, so I can't imagine how that could be, but... Do we have a need for a budget discussion tomorrow night is the public hearing of the budget?
I think I stuck that in there just to make sure nobody had it last minute.
Nope, and I think it was five point two? Is that the number I recall?
Yep, no, five point five.
Five point five?
Yeah, I think it was.
What percentage increase over last year? Is that a percentage?
Five point five percent increase.
Right.
Yeah, that's the increase.
Yeah.
I don't have any.
And we did cut, did they know that you cut the, or that the budget committee ended up changing the new person we're hoping to get's?
The six-month, starting...
Amount of money, because it was right.
A full year amount cut to six months, because, but it's gonna be a full-time job request. This budget will only cover six months, 'cause it doesn't get, if it gets approved in March, we won't be getting anybody till June.
Okay, so that makes, it's not that we're, we're not gonna miss out on, we're, we're going forward with hiring that position. I feel pretty strongly that that's a good idea.
I do too, especially given if we had that person.
And so, we, it gets approved in March, let's say we put it out and we get somebody in April who's just fantastic and we wanna start them at, you know, at the end of April, could we find the money someplace to, to add another month or two?
It's so early in the budget, I couldn't say yes, but I would think it's probably likely.
We would sure try to find someplace to switch it from.
Yeah, they could work for free for a couple of weeks.
Couple of months.
Two-month training.
Yeah, two months, free training? Geez, I've had, I've had lots of people who go for that.
Select Goldman's salary.
Can I take it every year and give it away? He doesn't take it, so I don't know what the difference is to what strategies are.
There's a, there's a series of statutes, there's a statutory provision under New Hampshire law that says if you're acting as a volunteer, you get additional liability protection. So it's harder for someone to sue you for something if you're acting as a volunteer.
That's the last thing I'd worry.
I know, I know, and, and we have insurance anyways and I'm not even sure it applies to someone who's working as a, as a selectman, but I always figure...
Does this group have director's insurance? Does this group have director's insurance?
The town has. So there's insurance anyways, but I just always figured for the six hundred dollars or whatever it is, I, I would add the statutory protection.
Yeah.
I would sue to share the licensing board a number of times by people whose licenses we took away or restricted.
Yeah, it's no fun.
Yeah. Okay, MS seven thirty-seven. I have another suggestion for the state. Why can't they make all of these some logical number? And if it's the school, it could be M seven thirty-seven. I mean, S seven thirty-seven, and the town could be T or M for municipal. Every single form that's the same has a different number depending on where it goes. I think it's very...
Ours is a MS seven thirty-seven, theirs is an MS seven.
Yeah, why?
School.
Why can't it be the same number?
What would you like it?
Seven thirty-seven.
Because the school and the town are different.
But it would be a separate form. We're reporting the same... But it would be a separate form, we're reporting the same thing.
Not on the school, the school's not on.
No, that's we don't get, never mind.
No, I don't understand what you're saying, sorry.
It's not, it's a mistake on my part.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to send a message to the D R A if you'd like to.
No, I obviously got off on the wrong side of the bed.
Write your legislative, I have a halfway serious question, what is an MS thirty, seven thirty seven? Report of.
Proposed budget for the town of Lime.
Great, thank you.
I love it, I love it.
I'm just cranky today, that's all.
I get it, totally.
Still smiling, but, so, we have this seven thirty seven.
So we're in airplane.
It does, it'll be taking off shortly. I hope not to Philadelphia or, where was that, oh, yeah, D C. I think I looked at this once before.
Yes.
Did you send me a draft of it?
Yep. It's just to make sure I don't forget anything.
I didn't see anything missing, I think that's why I'm cranky about it, because they take our budget and put it in their form, which.
Yep.
You probably have to do manually, which is too bad.
Yep. Yeah, it's, yeah, mhm.
Any other relevant or non-relevant comments about the MS seven thirty seven? None from David, none from Ben, okay, I guess that's okay to forward it on.
Okay, well, this will go to the budget committee, and once they.
Of course.
And Dick's reviewed it, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So once they.
Igualized.
Whatever, and if they change something, I'll have to change it, and then I'll have to come back and sign it, but they all have, the whole budget committee has to sign this.
Excellent. So you'll get to see it tomorrow night?
Excellent.
In all its glory. It's gone out to the budget committee or not yet, today?
I don't think today I'm sending out all this stuff, cause there's a bunch.
Do we have any petition warrant articles to review and vote on?
Yep.
How many?
One.
Okay.
So on your warrant, it's number three.
Okay.
It's the one about the two sessions for the annual town meeting.
Okay.
And it was um.
I see so old.
Petitioned by Mark.
Schiffman.
Schiffman, and there were over twenty-five registered voter signatures. So, um, and it is what.
I'm not sure if that's an updated one, Rich?
It is, yeah.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yep. So yeah, and it's what you guys were talking about, being able to have the meeting separated from the actual election voting ballot day.
So, we did talk about this, we met with Mark Schiffman, we also approved going forward with the order to vote to have that discussion. Would we like to revote it to make sure that we still feel this way?
What will we be voting on, we're not approving it or just?
No, it's just, it, our recommendation to take it forward, says, the petition warrant article reads, do you approve of having two sessions for the annual town meeting in this town? The first session for choice of town officers elected by an official ballot, and other action required to be inserted on said official ballot. And the second session on a date set by the select board for transaction of other business. And then it says recommended by the select board by a vote of three to zero.
And the board has to vote on any petitioned warrant article.
Do you think um, you think having the select board vote to recommend this helps or hurts the chances of being adopted at town meeting?
It'll be curious to see you on it.
I don't, I I would venture a guess that it certainly won't unanimously be approved, if it is approved, but I think there are a lot of folks who might prefer.
Well, I think if we didn't approve it, there'd be more attention paid to it.
Right.
Can I ask, just a little clarification here, this would give, I think, the last time, or when you last spoke, there was some thought. That this would give the select board the ability to have the ballot on the date the state prescribes, but then to change the date of the.
Business meeting.
Deliver the business meeting, yes, to some other convenient time, which, you're sort of setting things in motion here, so that the the school district and the town business meeting could be the same day.
They could be the same day, or they could be two days in a row, or.
Right, right, yep, so you, that gives you the flexibility.
That gives the ability to do that to the select board.
Yep, great.
The school has that flexibility, they can set their date pretty much within the whole month of March.
Good.
It gives the select board the same flexibility.
Same flexibility, and yes, we are, I heard this year, I think, we always hear a little bit, but I heard more this year about people wanting these two groups to be. Closer together, so that the general public has a better idea of the whole budget. And I think that's probably a good idea, and maybe by having one later in the day, or earlier in the day, some kind of connection between the two, we might get more people. We hope, but again, you can lead a horse to water, you can't make him drink. That's the theory behind it, I don't believe anything else has changed here.
No.
And we've got the final numbers on the the milfoil, we've already seen that, and.
And then the the budget committee's vote is from the vote that they took to go to public hearing, so that might change, but other than that.
Oh, right, okay.
That's all, the numbers.
That will, if it changes, it'll be tomorrow night.
Right.
Rich, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Your petition warrant article.
Yes.
Were you able to get enough signatures to?
I was not.
Okay.
So it will still be there.
So petition article number two is a zoning change, it will still be on here.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. I don't, so guys, are we gonna, I'm gonna move the, we support article number three.
I'll second.
Thank you, David, all those in favor, say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye, so we have reconfirmed our approval of that.
Yep.
And.
And you also don't see anything on the warrant that you'd like changed?
I didn't, I did not. I studied it earlier, well, at the end of the week, I did not look at it again this morning, but I think it's what we've been over several times.
And because I will need you to sign this, and I may have to make changes after.
After tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, we'll need to, we can't wait till the next meeting, we may have to.
So, um.
Come in and sign it.
We can state that we have consensus on the word as it appears now, and that we will come in and sign after the budget committee goes forward, but. That shouldn't change how our vote is anyway.
No, except for if the budget committee votes to, let's say, cut one of the warrant articles, or not fund it, or not fund the budget to this number. Then you need to read this, the financial stuff.
So then we'll have to have a special meeting.
Correct, right.
Got it, well, I'm good with that, so I think that's an understanding about where we are, so we can't sign the warrant yet. And, wow, coolly bully, as far as I know, it is not yet eleven fifteen.
Right.
Do we have someone coming in for that?
Yes, you do.
Okay, then, I actually have some non-public that I want to bring up as well, which is also. RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, little letter C, which is reputation.
Okay, and before you move that, wait a minute. I'm really sorry, but I have one quick thing.
Oh, all right.
That should do, be done in public.
Okay.
Um, Judy Russell has sent her resignation sadly from the Lime, um, is it the heritage, the Heritage Commission?
Oh, not from the library.
She, no, thank goodness.
Historic conservation, something.
I'm sorry, what?
I thought it was the historic, historians.
It's the Heritage Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, um, she just, with her job, just doesn't have time, she's still gonna volunteer, help them when she can, but she just can't be on the committee.
Okay, well, with great regrets, we say goodbye. But she's still at the library, she's still in town, she's still definitely.
She's, as a library trustee, she's putting in an enormous number of hours.
Thank you, yes. Okay, now is it my turn?
Um, I just have one quick question, I I wanted to get an update on what was going on legally with respect to the the Smith properties. Is that public or non-public?
I think at this point it's non-public.
Cause legal?
Yeah, under legal, we can take that up when we go into non-public film.
Um, I wanted to go back to something you raised, David, which is that if the town wanted to, you could draft some boilerplate language. In reference to, you know, proper execution, or cooperative execution, or whatever language you wanted to have that could. If the select board adopted it, then whoever's signing a contract could be asked to include that as as part of their contract.
See, the problem is, yeah, there's a bunch of stuff like that, there's a bunch of things that would be useful to have in there. In, that that if I was drafting contracts for the town, I'd put in there, I think, and you know, I'm sure Laura has other stuff. The problem is that it's a contract for four hundred and fifty dollars worth of guy searching on the computer, and he's got his boilerplate contract, and then you're gonna go back to him with a markup, and he's gonna go. Boy, are you out of your friggin' mind, I'm not gonna go hire a lawyer to, I don't even know, he's, he does, he's not a lawyer, he's, he's gonna want a lawyer to review these changes. A lot of times what happens is you, they, you know, even where it's something where there's a lot of money at stake, or something important at stake, you go back to him with changes, and they say, screw you, uh. We're, you know, we're not changing our contract for the for the town of Lime, so the question is, is it worth the, you know, where do you go with it?
We actually did that with that one contract that had to do with our first responders, and it took more than six months, and it was one sentence.
I withdraw the suggestion.
It's a great suggestion.
I know, I, I, I mean, that was, in part, my point in bringing it up is just sort of a feeling of, I don't, you know, I'm not, we're not doing this. And for reasons that kinda makes sense, but at the same time, I wanted all of my other board members to know we're not doing it, and.
Right, the reality is, the likelihood of anything happening needs to be looked at in these cases, and the likelihood is very, very low on these kind of contracts.
Well, and you've had your attorney look at it too, so.
Yeah, and we've been dealing with it for, for same people, but you're right.
Right.
That's what attorneys do for, is that they look at the, at things that are very, very unlikely to happen. But where the consequences of them happening would be significant, and then we worry about that, that's, so that's the job. And I think.
Sue, oh, go ahead.
Uh, and I think Deena's comment, that should one of these folks turn out to be entirely intractable and just unpleasant to deal with when there was a problem, we wouldn't hire them the next year. And for, you know, for six hundred dollars or something on a, on an annual contract, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Sue, before we go in non-public, do you have any comments or suggestions or anything?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you, okay, it is ten forty-five, I am going to move us into a non-public session, or I'm gonna at least move one. Under RSA ninety-one A colon three, Roman numeral two, little letter C, uh, reputation. Thank you, Ben, all those in favor?